If you can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can remain standing, we have Curtis Smith, our Police Chaplain, going to give us our vocation.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, honored guests, citizens of the community, let us bow for prayer. Lord, we come into your holy presence asking your blessing on those who will be participating in this council meeting. We would also ask you to bless the Santa Ana first responders, who bravely serve and sacrifice in the line of duty guarding and protecting those whom they serve. Bless those who were shared before this council assembly tonight. May they speak with respect as they share their concerns, let their voices be heard, and trigger credible action beneficial to all citizens of the city of Santa Ana. We ask that you would invoke a blessing upon the individuals who will be honored with certificates of recognition tonight. Let them know that they are appreciated. Bless the upcoming activities and events set aside on the calendar. With providence and direction and divine intervention, guide the thinking of the mayor and the council members in decisions made regarding the items on the agenda. May this council meeting, which was called to order in unity, be conducted expeditiously with dignity and honor and adjourned in harmony. And all of God's people said, Amen.
If I can have Sofia Chavez, Ray Diaz, Michelle Lee, and Leslie Ramirez come forward at this time? We have one individual, you're going to represent all four. Come around, go this way. I'm up here because we're going to give certificates of recognition to winners of the register and vote campaign. All these people have voted multiple times during the last election. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. No, what they did was they registered people and encouraged them to vote. It was part of September 2018 City-Santa Ana partnership with the Santa Unified School District and the Santa Police Department. In accordance with National Registration Day, we launched a register and vote campaign. Campaign was created to bring awareness to local students about their right and opportunity to vote once they turn 18. Social media played a huge role in this campaign as the contest was conducted by the Youth Commission, in which five things you should know about voting were emphasized. The five things are: no postage is required to vote by mail; voting is available in multiple languages; deadline for voting was October -- voting by mail was October 22; young people can pre-register to vote at 16 and 17 years old; and a promotion of voting by mail was also part of the campaign. So would you like to say a few words in recognition of your colleagues?
First, I'd like to thank off the City Council and thank Mr. Plato. So I'm always glad to, I'm proud to advocate for youth voter turnout because, as many of you know, it's extremely important that everybody goes out and does their civic duty and has their voice heard. Because yes, one vote does make a difference and impacts all of our lives in many more ways than you expect. Thank you.
Mr. Diaz? This is Mr. Diaz, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you certificates so you can take them back and pass them out to the others and thank them for their effort. And this is in recognition for being winners for the register and vote campaign as part of our community in educating the youth on the importance of voting. Thank you very much.
We all need to focus on that, starting with the council here. Good evening, and you know, it's nice, you know, having you all here. This is one of our first, you know, real meetings after the start of the year, so happy New Year to everybody. We hope 2019 is going to be an amazing year. And we have some amazing people in this room, including a group of dedicated, strong, positive immigrant Latina women. I want to come up. This is part of the Mujeres Migrantes en Progreso, in a new program that they started. So if we can have Dolores Almares and the rest of you come on up, por favor. Under the leadership of Dolores, there was a new professional cosmetics workshop series that was given a great name, Iluminando Sonrisas, Illuminating Smiles. And this program was created by Mujeres Migrantes en Progreso. And this program that they did, this cosmetic program, is an opportunity for women to become empowered and develop and strengthen their skills in cosmetics. These skills not only allow women to become more knowledgeable in the field of makeup, but also allow for development in makeup as a profession and as a career. The Iluminando Sonrisas, or Illuminating Smiles, program taught these women how to become masters of makeup and brought out their passion for that art. The development of these skills have allowed for this group of women to develop a professional skill and also to become empowered and independent. Today, we recognize the graduates of this program that include Katia Aldana, Marta Briseño, Mireya Castrejon, Guadalupe Zeledón, Anna Cruz, Marta Hernández, Patricia Hernández, Marta Martínez, María Merlán, Heidi Navarete, Rosa Rojas, Gabriela Sánchez, Anna B. Solorio, who is a distant relative from Michigan, so it's great having her here, Anna Tutila and Tensy Valerio. Thank you all so much for your dedication to empowering yourselves, and when you empower yourselves, you're empowering your whole family and the whole community. So on behalf of the mayor and City Council, gracias por lo que están estudiando, gracias por ayudarse ustedes mismas, y por ayudarles ustedes mismas, ayudar a sus familias y toda la comunidad, de parte del alcalde y consejo municipal. Felicidades y muchas gracias.
Buenas tardes a todos. Quiero agradecer especialmente. Esta clase no se hubiera hecho si no hubiera sido por el patrocinio de una gran persona que ha visto no nada más las necesidades que hay en la ciudad, sino también las necesidades en la mujer. Iluminando Sonrisas es un proyecto que ayuda a empoderar, a este, a empoderar, a dar una habilidad a cada mujer, con este, enseñarles una técnica para que aprendan a iluminar su rostro, para que ellas luzcan más hermosas, más bellas, y se sientan más seguras de ellas mismas. Estoy mucho muy agradecida porque no nada más se empoderó a las personas, sino con el apoyo de nuestro concejal, José Solorio. Fue posible tener el material para que cada una de ellas tuviera su propio material para que ellas pudieran seguir practicando en sus casas y seguir luciendo bellas cada día. Gracias señor José Solorio. Sin su apoyo, esta clase no hubiera sido posible.
She wants to thank everyone. She's very happy, and she wants to thank everyone for empowering. She wants to empower all these girls, and everyone was, has the materials, they practice at home, and without Mr. Solorio's support, they wouldn't be here today. She wants to thank the whole council.
And we have a big stack of certificates. Because we are running late, maybe let's just each take one so we can take a photo. Ay, nos vemos a la marcha de mujeres también este próximo sábado.
All right. I'd like to pull item 19C, but any other item that any other council members wish to pull?
Um, yes.
Go ahead.
20A, 20C, 25J, and 25D.
20A, 20C, 25--
J.
J.
And 25D.
And 25D. So you went to J before D.
Yeah, I know.
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor, my only request is something that's not on the consent, but it's item, business item 55C. If we could advance that on the calendar and I'm fine with the other requests.
All right. What I'll do is let's go right now to 55C. This is adopting a resolution of the City Council urging President Trump sees efforts to reinterpret, I guess, or renegotiate the 2008 United States Vietnam Repatriation Agreement. We have one speaker on that, Ken Nguyen. Come on down, Ken, and then I'll bring it to council for consideration. Go ahead, Ken.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. Many Vietnamese Americans are living in Santa Ana and are spotted throughout the United States. Today, they came from U.S. after the fall of Saigon in 1975, wished the beginning exodus of over 1 million Vietnamese who left their homeland freeing from communisms insured for freedom and democracy in America. California is home to more than 500,000 Vietnamese residents who are actively enriched the social, cultural, economic fabric and throughout state as well as our city. Recently, President Donald Trump has tried to modify the agreement which made between U.S. and Vietnam in 2008, that any Vietnamese who arrived into the U.S. before July 12 of 1975, when U.S. and Vietnam reestablished diplomatic relationship, are not subject to return to Vietnam, is deport back to Vietnam. This individual in question was, have, was commit crime and received the sentence and become a productive resident in this country. They, when they brought to the United States, there was young people, they didn't know any better, so they have made few mistakes, and they was, for that, they cannot able to fly for become a stewardship. Now, if they return to Vietnam, they would not able survive because they, Vietnam no longer their home, no longer their country. U.S. is their home and they're now their country. And as well, and the humanity reason, the, many of those individuals mentioned are resident, some of them are residents of Santa Ana, they have been married, have children. If they send, they've been sent home, they will separate them from their loved one. I urge the mayor and the council to vote to approve in favor of item 55C. Thank you.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed--
Mr. Mayor, can I just--
Go ahead, make comment, go ahead.
Thank you to my colleagues for advancing this matter. I know this is pretty far down on the calendar, but I see that there are some people that were interested in speaking and hearing on this, and I see some of the media from the Vietnamese community. You know, Santa Ana was the birthplace of Little Saigon. And so, you know, years ago, when the fall of Saigon happened, many of those million residents came here, half a million that we have in the county. San Ana is home to about 30,000 to 40,000. They've made their lives here, they've made their homes here. The, you know, really the center of the Vietnamese media is here. I was just at an event on Saturday where one of the newspapers, Noi Viet, was turning 40 years old. And to see a community that's been able to embrace, you know, this community and the fact that the Vietnamese Americans have thrived, to have this sort of aggressive form of fear that was being instilled in many families and folks who call Orange County in the United States their home is a very sad thing. So I really do appreciate my colleagues supporting this. I think it's something that we as a city need to make sure that this is a simple resolution. We're not binding on federal government, but we certainly show the support for people who've come here, made their lives here, raised children here, and worked in this, in this great community. So thank you, and this is simply just urging and requesting that this agreement be kept in place. So thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to support the--
I think we already voted, but thank you for your comments. It was unanimous. And thank you, Ken, for your comments as well, and keep up the good work. Take care. So with that, let's go to the consent counter. Let me first entertain a motion on everything that was not pulled.
So moved.
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Item 19C, you're just pulling it for discussion, right?
Right.
Okay, so we'll discuss it and vote on it.
In a moment. Okay. So for that, those in favor for the balance, we have a motion in a second. Second right here with the Yegas. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. So now let's go down the items that were requested to be pulled. I think the first one would be 19C. And my request on that, it may or may not pass, but I still believe that Caribou Industries and the High School of the Arts can work together, even though we don't have an agreement yet. So I'd like to request one final 30-day continuance.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question and suggestion. I know we've already continued this a few times with that same intention, and there hasn't been progress. I believe Mr. Mike Hera is here from Caribou, and maybe he can give us a status on those conversations, because I know they have been talking with the Orange County--
Go ahead, Mike, if you want to come down and speak. I'm familiar with those conversations, I've been in them, I talk to these guys almost every day. I think there hasn't been progress, but go ahead, Mike.
And I think as part of the update, if, during this exclusive negotiating agreement, could you continue to work and have discussions, and if there is some breakthrough that we could still approve this, and you would still be open to conversing with others?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the City Council. Yes, actually, there's a packet in front of you that I brought in tonight that shows that, and there's three options in there. One of them is to include the school and have a separate entrance over to the side and still have the hotel. I don't know if you know this, I'm sure you all do, but I was the one that designed the school, built the school, and financed the school originally. My heart is with education and making things happen. I'm a believer that once we get, or if you approve the ENA, which is only an exclusive negotiation agreement, it's nothing more than that, that I could convince the school to go in there and everybody would work together. I think you probably, it's now been 26 years since you've owned this building, six years since you voted on two other people, three years since you voted on the last one. It's time that we do something with this. I've invested 23 years with the city and over $200 million, own 5 million square feet here, and prolonging this, Mr. Mayor, and continuing on and continuing on only adds to the more agony of having the homeless people surround the building and everything else. The only thing I want to do is clean this up. My part of my deal is, is the first 180 days after approving this, we're going to replace the windows, paint the building, fix the building up, place the landscaping, and then put all the lighting in the building so it looks just like the courthouse across the street. We can't continue to have, next to the High School of the Arts that I designed and built for Ralph Apasek, and I'm still a believer in them, we can't have the homeless people harassing the kids as they come to school from this building, and we need to, we need to make a change. The bottom line of the deal is, is during this negotiation period at any time, before it goes to a DDA, the city or the staff or the City Council can simply say, "We don't like the idea, we're not going to go forward." But for us to just continue on and prolong this, I think is, is just adding more and more to the, to the timing that we don't have with these bigger people that are coming to one Broadway and such.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. And clerk, next time, do the likes, please. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
Can I say something?
Certainly.
I just wanted to voice that, you know, I think this is going to come up a lot, you know, because of my age. My whole life, this building has been sitting there vacant, boarded up, attracting graffiti, homeless. That's why we see the homeless population gather across the street at the courthouse, and we see this throughout the city, is just projects just sitting vacant without any progress because of we keep, you know, delaying these things. So I wanted to voice my support for, you know, put, going into, following staff direction and moving forward with the agreement with Caribou Industries, and that's all I have to say.
Yes, Councilor Iglesias, please.
And I agree with Councilmember Anya Loza. I remember when I used to work for the County of Orange Social Services Agency at 888 North Main Street. This thing has, you know, it's been there for a very long time, and it's pretty much an eyesore for the city, and I know a lot of people don't feel comfortable walking around there because, like Mr. Hera was saying, it's boarded up and it just doesn't seem safe, and it's not inviting. And I think we've, I wasn't on the council then, back in, I think it was in November, got pulled 30 days, and then my first council meeting, it got pulled another 30 days, and then we're just delaying, and we're always asking for, you know, individuals who care enough about the city to try to invest, and we're making it so difficult for them. So I am very supportive of us starting this conversation. I know that I've seen some, a lot of accolades from actually OSHA to Mr. Hera, who has, you know, who he's been instrumental in providing opportunities. And this is not saying that he, OSHA won't have access, in my understanding, to this, it's more of a conversation that should be had. And I just want to thank Mr. Hera for, you know, putting up with, with the tantrums of, you know, what the city is doing, because pretty much, you know, we're, you want to invest, and we want to encourage individuals like yourselves to continue investing in our city, because what we, as a city, in order for us not to go bankrupt, and I'll say it, not go bankrupt, is we need investment, we need investors, we need people to come in here, to want to live here and shop here, and I don't know if you guys have had an opportunity to look at the, the plans that Mr. Hera just brought to us right here. There, it's beautiful, it's just going to make downtown Santa Ana like a place that people want to come to. So I'll be very supportive of this ENA and accepting staff recommendation to move forward to start that conversation.
Thank you. With that, we have a motion before us. I could make a speech, but I won't, that would disagree with, you know, much of what was said. But for right now, we have a motion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
So the motion fails, it's three to three, and so--
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Okay.
If nothing else decided, we'll just roll over to the next meeting. I would make a motion to approve staff recommendation, but add an additional element, asking our acting city manager to host a meeting between Mr. Mike Hera and representatives from the--
All right, that's a motion, is there a second?
--of the R, so that we ensure that the meeting happens.
All right, is there a second?
Just a point of clarification, but this is saying that staff is going to move forward to starting with the ENA with Mr. Hera.
Correct, correct. But they'll host the meeting as well, yes.
All right.
Yes.
We have a motion, a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? No?
No.
All right, motion fails.
So it comes back in--
They'll roll over, which is what we wanted, correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So now, item 28. There's an appropriation adjustment for purchase and sale agreement. Who, I think, Councilor Iglesias, you pulled that, or who pulled that?
28?
Yes.
And let me know when, my microphone is not on, I'm sorry. If you could just give me, just the description of what this really is, of what we're doing, because I know we're talking about the Bristol Street Widening Improvement Project, and so what does this really mean, and what is it that you're asking us to do?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So as part of the widening project, the city was purchasing properties along the east or west edge of Bristol Street. So these properties were purchased, and they were originally purchased as residential, but the Bristol Street specific plan identified this strip on both sides of Bristol as commercial. Once the improvements are done, there's a graphic on the third page of the, excuse me, the one, the fourth page of the RFCA, there's a graphic that shows that once the cul-de-sac is constructed for 12th Street, as it comes into Bristol Street, once that cul-de-sac is constructed and the Bristol widening is completed in this particular area, the remaining parcels are very, very small. Independently, they can't be developed, and they're no longer residential, they're commercial. So standalone, there's nothing that can be done. The property just to the north of there was a partial take, and so that property has lost some parking spaces. So in this particular case, we're asking the City Council's blessing and approval so that we can sell those properties. We have received a site plan from that property just to the north that would develop and expand their parking capacity to its original. You know, they've lost a frontage along Bristol, so by approval of this sale, the site plan can be expanded to the north, and then the proceeds from the sale would go back into the project so that we can continue construction of Bristol. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, that was, that was one of my questions. So does it go back to the funding, the M2 funding?
That's correct. It goes back to the Bristol project, and some of it, actually, in this particular case, I think it's $73,000, that's actually going to be reimbursed to OCTA. They're requesting, every time we do a project, we true up at the end of the project, sometimes they owe us a little bit more money, sometimes we owe them. So in this particular case, $73,000 of the sale would go back to OCTA.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. I believe, Councilor Iglesias, that was yours as well?
So this one is requesting approval from the council to appropriate funds into the Bristol project. Last December, the City Council approved an agreement for the McDonald's site, and that agreement meant that the city would be paying out $1.2 million, that that was not a foreseen expenditure. So what we're asking here is to appropriate funds, and when the City Council approves future sales of properties, the sale of-- future sales of properties, the sale of those property proceeds will go back into making these appropriation adjustments whole. So we're basically asking for appropriating $600,000 from prior year... From prior year, select streets' construction revenue, and we're also requesting appropriation adjustment of $272,000 from transportation system improvement area F revenues, and we're requesting for that appropriation so that then we can also reallocate $1.2 million of unspent fiscal year 15, 16 measure M2 dollars. All of those funds will be used so that we can proceed with the construction of Bristol project. Some of these appropriation adjustments can be paid back when future sales of the Bristol properties are approved by the council. That will be a separate recommendation that's brought to the council before an RFP is floated so that we can look at selling some of these properties.
But, um, we have one that is going to submit the allocating plan to public...
So...
So, um, the, go ahead.
We are asking for select streets' construction fund. It's basically gas tax dollars that we have, so we have $600,000 available from gas tax that hasn't been encumbered. We're also asking for transportation system improvement funds, which are basically infrastructure funds that haven't been consumed, and then we're also looking for reallocation of $1.2 million of measure M2 funds that are unspent. So that together will feed into continuing the construction of Bristol. In the future, when properties along Bristol are sold, then we can kind of refund the gas tax that's being taken. What we're trying to do is, we're not trying, we're trying to use funds for Bristol Street that are not gas tax. So that way, all of Bristol Street is being done using OCTA and grant funds, and we can restore the gas tax funds when the sale of those properties are available, and then we can restore the gas tax.
Thank you for that. So I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. We have one no.
We need five votes.
So we'll roll it over till next time around, then. 20C, we have, I believe that is your item as well?
Yes.
All right, so now we're where? 25D?
This is just a quick question, just for clarification. I know we're just going to approve an agreement with UCI so they can provide sexual assault evidence collection services to the police department. I'm just wondering how that is going to be monitored and reported on the progress of what's, of the program? How often is it going to come to either staff and, you know, aside from the police department, on how effective this program is? So I don't know who is in charge of...
This program is designed to perform investigative analysis. We're doing investigative services through them. This program is going to, we're paying UCI back for things that they've already done. This isn't per se an academic exercise that we would come back and report to you information, they're performing evidentiary assistance to our programs. If you're looking for us to come back, we'll come back as often as you want to let you know that we're spending the money, but what would you be interested in learning, ma'am?
No, my thing was, it seemed like it was more like, the way I read it, it seemed like it was more like an academic program, so I was wondering if you guys were measuring performance and all that, but if it's something to help you do your job, then I'm okay.
They perform evidentiary evaluations for us as part of certain types of cases.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
All right, do we have a motion? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item 25J?
So item 25J, it's, I don't know who's going to be speaking on this, but this is to approve severance agreement with Raúl Godíniz, who is our city manager, and I just have a couple of comments and quick questions for staff. One of the things, I'm reading the contract that was negotiated...
Sonia, this will probably come your way.
Okay, so, and it just seems like it's an awful lot of money that we're, as a city, that we're giving to this city manager for him leaving our city, and I just feel it's inappropriate being in the fact that we are in a financial burden as a city, you know, we just passed Measure X right now, we're hoping that that's going to generate $60 million. But it's just, we keep on going and going and just spending money like there's no tomorrow. That's just my perception. And I just, I just feel that it's very costly to the city. We have gone through about six city managers in the past four years. So my question to Sonia would be is, I know the contract when we hired, well, not we, but when the city hired Mr. Godíniz, it was, we have to have like a stipulation, like, you know, six months after an election, and six months, you know, we couldn't, he couldn't either let go, or we couldn't let him go, but I know that this came, for me, very sudden. We took this, this decision, you know, my first meeting, and it was a very, very tough decision, and I just, I just want to know, moving forward, it's like, you know, we're looking into trying to even fill this position now, and it's, how is this going to affect the city, and also, how much money have we given and pay, you know, to all the city managers that have left in the past four years?
Well, regarding the totality of the settlement agreements, we certainly do not have that on the fly for you this evening. We can certainly do research and bring that back to you separately in a memorandum, if you like. This is a personnel issue, so I want to make sure that we walk that fine line on the personnel issue that it is. You have fellow council members that have worked on this severance agreement, taking you in a certain direction, and the council's going in that direction, and this is the result of that direction.
Okay. So how much, how much is it that we're paying him? And I know it's in there, but I would like for you to say it publicly.
Certainly. The staff report indicates us $394,586 in 21 settlement.
For him to just, okay, walk away, okay. So I just want to say that I'm not going to be supportive of this, because I just think it's not the right thing to do for the city.
All right, thank you for that. I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
I have a comment.
Okay, I'll second the motion, go ahead.
I just, I believe that this item, all our colleagues should be present, is there a way that we could get all of them out here?
No, several are sick, and they've had to leave, so I think it's up to us to just move forward. I'm ready to vote.
Oh, they're sick now, is it?
Yeah, they, Roman had an emergency and so did Vince.
Okay, they seemed fine five minutes ago, but okay, let's move on.
It's not them, it's a family member.
Oh, okay.
It's a family member.
Got it.
All right, so those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. So with that, let's go on to the next item. Would that be 55A, ma'am clerk? I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. There was an aye?
Yeah, it was an aye.
All right, it was unanimous in favor. Let's now go to item, is it 55B?
Motion approved.
Do we have a second?
I'll make the second, but I do have a...
Okay.
I know we, it's part of our measure and just interest, and we've received some community feedback regarding appointees to an oversight committee. If we approve this item as is tonight, what type of flexibility is there if any to make changes to the future makeup? For example, if rather than essentially one appointee each by each council member, that maybe it's two, or maybe for some, there's an interest in having them be from certain backgrounds.
Well, I'd like to talk to you about that, and thank you for the opportunity to do so. The difficulty is, we have seven member council members, and seven members on this committee would not be enough to regularly achieve four. Now, two members each of you would not, would be too many to try to organize and move in one direction. So nine is the sweet spot between these two numbers, that your staff has selected for you to choose from. We're not hooked on how you get to the nine, but we think nine is a really good place for we, for us to work with and to represent your community properly.
So I understand that, but if, down the road, if we did still have quorum issues, or if we or the group wanted to add additional, maybe we could bring back an additional resolution or have a conversation about that, I would suppose?
What we would do is bring it back to the body that created that committee, and that would be yourselves, and we would ask for a modification of the committee if it wasn't working in its envisioned form.
Yeah, so I then, you know, with that understanding, I'm fully supportive, I do think we need to get started with, you know, making those appointments, and if there are compelling reasons to make changes down the road, we have to keep that, you know, option open. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Iglesias.
So, just to, just more point of clarification, I think this is what we're talking about, is the appointing of individuals to these, to this committee. So just to understand, so it's going to be one from each council member?
And then three from the mayor.
Is there a reason why it's three from the mayor? You know, he's been here a while, but...
Yes, as I just explained, nine is a number that we can work with really well. We're not stuck on how you get to nine, but two nominees each is too many to work with, and one nomination from each of you is not enough to work with.
You know, and I would just add, I think part of it is for the appointments that the mayor would make, some are with criteria, so he has like certain criteria to appoint a certain type, whereas for the rest, they're just at large. I would also make the comment that this item's also discussed on 65A, but they're kind of connected because, you know, the one we're on is about the measure overall, and 65A is more specifically about...
And council members, I'm very open to input. If you guys have people in mind or whatever, I'm very open to working with you.
There's criteria.
Absolutely.
Good point, Mr. Mayor.
If I could clarify, counsel, you're just setting the framework tonight. If you agree on that framework, it'll come back to you in a formalized manner. Catherine will bring it to you at a later date.
Okay.
So I motion approve the framework.
Do we have a second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, if I can do the oaths of office at this moment?
Go ahead.
We have two members that are present.
Go ahead.
We have Jennifer Oliver and Angie Rivera. If they can please come forward so I can administer your oath of office.
I, Angie Rivera.
Do solemnly swear. To support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties which I am about to enter. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, let's get back to 55B. We kind of skipped over 55 and B and went to 55A.
Madam clerk, any comment?
Yes, I think it was 55B, the comments were on 55, 65B, but they are somewhat related to 55B. So if we can move forward with 55C and just take them in order.
No, actually, 55B, we want to go back to 55B.
Oh, you want to go back.
To make sure the resolutions from Measure X are... 65A was the discussion, and Councilmember Solario brought it up, and that discussion was just misnumbered in our...
I think we did take a vote, though.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, yeah.
On 65A, you did.
On 55B as well.
You were talking about 65A.
Right. No, no, I was talking about 55B, but I mentioned that there was a relation with...
Right, but the vote was on 55B.
But the vote itself was on 55B, and then 55C, we took earlier, I think, while you were...
We took it earlier, out of order.
Wait, madam clerk, because it was an item by Mr. Sarmiento.
Involving the Vietnamese community and...
We're moving forward with 65A.
Yes, we need a vote on that now.
Yes.
Yes.
So I would entertain a motion on 65A.
So moved with, you know, the prior discussion as well, to be concerned.
Okay.
Second on that.
Is there a...
A second.
People in favor, folks in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So now, 65B is in boy, I would entertain a motion.
I moved the item, but one element of this is making appointments or at least giving preference options to the staff on what council committees we would like to serve on. You know, a couple of our colleagues aren't here, so maybe...
May you roll it over?
I'd either roll it over or have staff ask them what committees they would like to be on, and then come back at least with some input.
All right.
That's fine.
So why don't you make that a formal motion?
Yeah, so I moved the item, but with reference to item 3, appoint two to three council members for each committee, that via the city manager's office, we reach out to the seven council members to see what committees they might be interested in serving on by preference order, and then that could be brought back at the next meeting.
That question for Councilmember Solario.
Go ahead.
What do you think about establishing an ad hoc committee instead of the edebet, just having an ad hoc from time to time?
You know, I think if it's under their current structure, it's important to keep it as it is, just because different aspects of this committee have different points in time to meet. That's not to say there couldn't be a budget, I mean, an ad hoc committee on one aspect of this, like, let's say, the budget or a development project, but I wouldn't want to make the whole thing an ad hoc committee just because there's reason to meet on an ongoing basis.
Very good. Support that.
So for the record, it's to maintain the current committees in their, right?
Correct.
The current committee members and to... The current committee members and to seek the input from the other two council members to, to find out what interests...
See if they're interested in serving and in what capacity. And what I would add to that is that I'm interested in, with cooperation from interested council members, in establishing ad hoc committees to work on special projects, independent of all this.
Correct.
Separate from all that. Some may say I prefer to work on an ad hoc, I don't want to be on, on, on the structured permanent committees, and that's okay, too. We have that flexibility.
I agree, that's a good idea, Mr. Mayor.
Just for clarification.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to vote just to, to keep the committees as they are, but also say, I'm interested in, in a specific committee, then I talk to...
Or you can come to me, and I, and I will work with you, and or if there's another council member, in establishing an ad hoc committee with that specific purpose.
Okay.
And, and that could exist for a month, or a year, or whatever, until you feel you've accomplished enough. If it's going to be a standing committee, then, then we should make it a standing committee.
Well, one of those standing committees that I would like to serve on is that express interest now or later?
No, if you want to, you, you can express interest right now.
Right now, I would like to be on the, the youth, the one, the joint use with the school district.
You want him to continue to see you.
Of course. And I like, I like seeing them, they're good partners, but I, I just feel that, you know, being with my experience...
Oh, Madam Clerk, let's vote, let, I mean, let's add that to the record, that she's expressed that right now. And you don't have to express, you know, you could come back in two days and say...
But I wanted just him to go.
You got it. All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now, 65C, approval of terms for resident vehicle incentive program. I know we have some folks out there in the audience watching with interest. I would entertain, we have a speaker. Peter Whittingham. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Polito and councilmembers. Peter Whittingham of hearing on behalf of Orange County Auto Dealers Association. I'd like to thank your council certainly for its consideration of the program, as well as thanking your staff, specifically Mr. Mendoza, for working with the auto dealers on the recommended components of this program. We'd like to respectfully request one modification and clarification of an element in the staff report, dealing with the term. We propose that two years from the date of implementation, which would be April 1st, 2021, since this program would go into effect April 1st of this year, that the staff would prepare a report for the council on the status of the program, how it's working, the various components, et cetera, and then come back every two years thereafter with an update to that. At any of those junctures, the council could make tweaks to the program, consider different elements that are working, not working, what have you, et cetera. So that's what we would like to see in the term. I'll point out that with the increase in the sales tax and the average sales price of both new and used vehicles sold at these dealerships, the actual cost of the program to the city is just $175,000 per year, so that's factoring in the base sales tax that you would still be getting here, and the one and a half cent over that. The proposed program cap certainly was not pulled from thin air, but it actually goes off of historic sales numbers, et cetera, as well as a proposed or a desired increase in sales, if, if we're lucky enough to see that happen here. So, again, the ownership of a number of the dealerships here in, in the city, as the mayor pointed out, is here tonight to answer any questions you might have, as is the executive director of the association. But again, we truly appreciate your consideration of this, and look forward to continued business with the residents of the city.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of Mr. Whittingham?
Mr. Whittingham, I didn't hear back from you. I know we had a conversation on the phone, we're supposed to have an appointment, never took place.
My apologies.
You know, I, I was hoping to hear a little bit more, but I like your idea on the, the two-year...
The reporting.
Yeah, terrific.
Excellent.
Terrific.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I also want to thank staff, in particular, our interim city manager, you, Stephen, you worked on that a lot, a lot, and I thank you for that. So with that, I'd entertain a motion.
Just have one question.
Yes.
I think it was very clear what the auto dealers are...
The amendments?
Yeah, the staff, any other outstanding issues or concerns or problems with this program as it's envisioned?
No, staff, staff's clear on the direction that the council has led, as directed, as we bring this back to you. Staff's main objective here is to ensure that we at least have 1,688 cars sold in 2018, 2019 to our residents. We want to make sure those purchases stay in the city of Santa Ana. There's two ways to think about this, as an incentive for the Auto Dealer Association or an incentive for your actual residents. This is an incentive for your residents.
But I would think that it's a requirement to show some type of proof of residency to receive this rebate?
Absolutely. The sales agent that does a deal, and doesn't, and maybe, let's, here's one of the things we envision. Let's say a sales agent does a deal to give a $500 rebate to someone who lives in the unincorporated area of Santa Ana, they're going to eat it if they don't get the check in correctly.
Right, no, good, good point, so there has to be good maps and good communications.
Exactly, good training, good communication. These young sales agents are hungry for the sale, they'll do everything they can to ensure it's done right.
You know, I would just say I'm only meant to support it as it is, but along the way, let's have some oversight, and if there's a need to bring it back with adjustments to make sure that the program is fulfilling its intended purpose, then we ought to be able to do that, I would think.
Absolutely. We'll be collecting ongoing data, and of course, if we need to report back to you or seek a modification, we'll go back to you for clarification of that information.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Again, this is just the terms, an agreement will come to you within 30 days, solidifying all those terms.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Whittingham, go ahead.
I just wanted to, Mr. Acting City Managers, well, we have, in this agreement, different options available to us of how these, these rebates are done, if it's, you know, direct to the sales, the, the auto dealer, or direct to the Santa Ana resident after they purchase the vehicle. Is that going to be discussed?
Tonight's night, right now is the time to discuss giving us direction of whether we want, whether you want the city to issue a $500 payment to a resident after they purchase, or if you want the dealer to incorporate the $500 savings into closing the deal.
Well, I, well, I think as right now, as the term is proposed, it's the resident's choice whether they want their money to come via a rebate from the dealer or a check directly from the, the city. I think I understand the agreement with details is going to come back either in two weeks or, or 30 days. At that point, changes could be made to the agreement overall if there were still questions or ambiguities. Tonight's just giving you just general direction on how to write up that agreement.
Correct, without any direction to the contrary, we will, we will write it up as a resident's choice.
Even though the staff report says, at least under, where details of program, I read it, resident's choice, but a check to the dealer or check to the resident?
Yeah. It's the resident's choice of how they want to receive the payment.
Correct, yes, yes, yes.
That's how we will write it up unless we're directed otherwise, the city.
Oh, okay, so, so just so I understand, I'm buying a car, I could either have the 500 deducted there on that contract, or opt out for a check from the city later afterwards?
Absolutely.
Okay, that would be, okay, got it, thanks.
And I don't know if anybody from the dealers wants to speak, but something I would warn against is that from an administrative standpoint, it's a lot of work. If you don't have to hire an extra person here at City Hall to be, you know, doing all the paperwork and tracking this and tracking that, if, if we can simplify it, save the taxpayers' money, make it more efficient, there's a lot of value in that. Lot of value in that. Are, are you hearing, Mr. Mendoza, what I'm saying?
You're speaking of prior, we don't want to...
Well, speak up.
We don't want to have staff to administer any program.
So we, you know, unintended con, all right, so with that, do we have a motion? I'd entertain a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, and let's go sell a lot of cars. A lot of cars, and trucks, and anything else you guys can figure out, maybe motorcycles, electric vehicles, everything. Scooters. Item 75A, this is time and place for a public hearing to adopt zoning ordinance and changes to the code, et cetera, et cetera. Do we have any speakers, madam?
Have not received any.
Okay, I'm, I'm still going to open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to address this on item 75A, I'll, will hear you now. If not, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to council for consideration. I, in particular, have some concern with this item, because I don't believe council gave direction on some of the areas that it covers, and I'd like to, you know, personally vote against it, let it go through committee, whatever we're going to do, let it come back, and, and, and we go from there. Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Well, the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wanted to move to deny 75A, so Mayor Protem makes that motion, second by Councilmember Iglesias. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You're requesting that we deny the project?
Denied, denied the item, let it come back.
Okay.
Go through committees, understand what's in there, because if you read the background material, there's a lot of stuff here, and...
You know, and, and in one area, and really for projects similar like this, including, I think another one that's a little bit later, I'm really concerned about the parking. I know staff's been trying to be creative, and, you know, there's a project here on First and Pacific that on paper, it looks like it has enough parking, but it doesn't, and one, one of the many complications that I'm seeing in this one, too, is where you have two parking stalls per garage, but they're tandem parking. No one likes tandem parking, and what ends up happening is you only end up having one car there, then people park on the street, and they say they don't, and it's just this ongoing situation where we're making neighborhoods worse for the existing folks, and then new individuals that are there that either buy a new place or rent a new place, they're extremely frustrated. I mean, I get calls and emails all type, time of the night of that other development, where they're all, "City, you guys just approved this," and it's a nightmare starting day one, so I'm very concerned that this...
And that's why I want this to go through committees.
Yeah, I agree.
It, it's, you know, staff is doing their best efforts, but they're kind of reading things that I think might be misread, and it's dangerous just to approve something like this. There could be a lot of bad consequences.
Just a question for the city attorney, I don't know, because sometimes there are fee implications. I guess tonight, we can either continue it, like for 30, 60 days, or vote to deny. Sometimes there are cost or time or process implications, so maybe if somebody can, can speak to that, or city, or acting city manager, Mendoza, first?
I'll be glad to, thank you very much for the opportunity. What you have here is lumped in together quite a few code amendments that we're putting together, and one, I would recommend, if, if okay with the city council and the mayor, is send us back to the planning commission for some polishing up.
I'd be happy to consider a change to that motion, but, but the other thing is, after you polish it up, make sure it comes early to council, not, not just as a recommended action.
Not as a final form, right?
Not as a recommended action, but, but earlier, because I'm telling you, there's stuff here about charter schools, for example, you know, things that we don't even know what we're voting on, because it's just such a big item, and it, and I consider it, you know, you're having potentially unintended consequences, and I don't want to see that happen.
We'll be glad to arrange for it to go back to the commission and a committee.
All right, let's, do we consider an amendment to the motion? I think you made the motion.
I made the motion to that.
And there was a second, so we're amending the motion to send it back to planning commission, but also inherent in that motion to include the city council through the process, so that we don't just get the final, you know, here's your package, it's all cooked up, up or down. We have to be understanding what's going on, because I'm telling you, this is a big one. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. 75B is in boy. There's another public hearing, time and place regarding Bardine Street and a portion of Third Street, and, Madam City Attorney, is it close to Ace Muffer, the portion of Third Street? It's further away, right? I think it's close to Standard, or where is this? It's, it's got to be further away, so I'm okay voting.
Thanks for...
It's driving up Standard up against Ford.
So it's more than 500 from 401 East First Street?
Yes, we, we have a brief presentation, couple of slides.
No, no, we don't need it.
Showing the location and...
We don't need it, I think we're good. I think we're good.
Thank you.
So with that, do we have any speakers, Madam Clerk?
We have not received any speakers.
No speakers, I will open and close the public hearing. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now, do we have ADA, madam? We have speakers on ADA? Okay, we used to be in favor of ADA, no, I'm kidding, but we have a lot of speakers on ADA. So please be brief and try not to repeat what the other person said. On item 80A, I'm going to call on David Jaimez, I believe, or James, followed by Marie Chevalier. Come on down, and if you can all please stand, and right when somebody's done, you go up and speak, Nina Kinn, and followed by Adiel DePano. Go ahead, who is, who is David? David goes first. Like in the Old Testament, right? Go ahead.
Good evening, I'm David, I'm a community organizer with Santana United Methodist Church, and I'm here to support the project that is being done on downtown. As a community organizer, I had the opportunity recently to get in touch with some organizations, like Grupo Vela and the Kennedy Commission, to, to kind of hear what some, some of the things they've been working on, specifically in that neighborhood. And affordable housing is the main thing that they've been working on as a community. And as a church, we have, we are actually, we are in transition and working on an opportunity to be a part of that good news. One of the things that our faith talks about is, is, is about a good news that brings that brings joy and goodness to the community. The news that has been in this community is gentrification and pushing and displacing people out of Santa Ana. And we continue to see this in Santa Ana, and it's, it's been affecting especially the most marginalized in our communities. We, as a people of faith, as Christians, believe to love God and love our neighbor, and we know that this is good news coming to this community, that not only is, is this, is this property going to be used to help the community, this is targeting, is targeting an issue that we need. And our church is really happy to be a part of this, and we would just ask for your support so we could bring good news to the people in that neighborhood for affordable housing.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Marie Chevalier, followed by Nina Kinn. And you can stand closer, you don't have to stand far away. Go ahead.
Good evening, my husband and I are members of Santana United Methodist Church, and I thank you for the opportunity to share the joint statement we have prepared. We love Santana, and we are very impressed with your efforts to revitalize downtown and to manage diversity of culture and income. We believe the Legacy Square Project is a unique opportunity for both the city and our church. Let me tell you why. We've been members of Santana UMC since 2017, and we chose it for its diversity and community outreach. Our congregation has been struggling with the financial and operational strain of maintaining two sites. We strongly support our church's decision to regroup on one site, which will be beneficial to our congregation. But we are also very proud of our congregation's desire to give back to the city of Santana by dedicating the most valuable real estate to urban renewal. The Legacy Square Project will enhance and prolong the vibrant character of downtown Santana, and offer a range of affordable housing close to schools, transportation, shops, and potential jobs. It also offers facilities and programs for social outreach and reinsertion of previously homeless Santana residents. We are very excited with this project for both the city of Santana and for our congregations, so we ask that you approve this project, and we thank you.
Marie, j'ai une question. Vous êtes française? Vous parlez français?
Un petit peu oui.
Un petit, je crois que beaucoup.
Oui, beaucoup.
Je suis sûr que beaucoup. Je suis sûr que beaucoup. Merci.
Merci.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nina Kev, and thank you for this opportunity. I am the nursery director at Santa Ana United Methodist Church, and my passion is families and children. And I am speaking to you in support of this project. I myself have been in affordable housing program for more than seven years, running on eight years now, and I know how it is difficult to find affordable housing for working families like myself. Up until June last year, just to share my experience, our family had been living in a one-bedroom apartment, a family of five, and it's only been six months until we were able to move our family, three children, into a much adequate housing. And four years it took for us to be able to actually make this happen. So the process, if you call communities, it's three to five years waitlist. It's just, we're in dire need of affordable housing program. There's a lot of families out there like mines that are trying their best to just make a better living condition for their families, so we hope that you support this program. It's going to help a lot of people in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. After Adiel, Doug Gillan, if you could come forward, Deborah Gillan as well, and Greg and Jerry Gerocca, I believe it is. G-E-R-O-C-A.
Gerocca.
Got it.
Yeah. Mayor Polito, thank you, council, for this opportunity to make this statement. I'm Adiel DePano, the lead pastor of Santana United Methodist Church. Faced with this unsustainable situation of maintaining two sites, Santana United Methodist Church originally looked at selling our property on 609 North Spurgeon Street. That would have generated a financial windfall for a prime piece of downtown property. But then, we all know how fast one can burn through even millions of dollars. Sandy Faruda, our conference associate director of District Properties and Congregational Loan Fund, was a godsend in leading us to consider the option of keeping the property and repurposing it into something that aligned with who we are as a church, called to love God and neighbor. We at Santa Ana United Methodist Church caught the vision of repurposing our downtown site into a complex of affordable housing as a way of responding to the number-one moral crisis facing America today. We have entered into a ground lease agreement with National Renaissance Corporation to develop our church property into a gift that will keep on giving for those who will be housed in its 92 residential units. It also creates a modest revenue stream for the church, but this is not the primary driver behind our decision. We want to be a part of a larger effort to address the need for affordable housing so that the working poor, individuals and families alike can have a better shake at life. I'm here as the lead pastor of the church to ask the city council to support our Legacy Square project. Two city bodies have so far come out in support of the project, the Community Redevelopment and Housing Commission, as well as the Planning Commission. For us, this project is a new and exciting expression of our vision to be God's hands and feet in Santa Ana, a way to live out our calling to love God and love neighbor. I pray for your support of this worthy and much-needed project in response to the affordable housing crisis gripping our city and nation. I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. Doug Gillan, welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, good evening, council and your honor. As chairman of the Board of Trustees for Santa Ana United Methodist Church, I'd like to give you a little background on Santa Ana United Methodist Church. We are a merger of three Methodist congregations here in Santa Ana that date back to 1869, 1873, and 1879. Some of our churches were founded by immigrants from Germany. Others, members of our church family date back to some of the founding fathers here in Santa Ana. And we have been blessed with this particular parcel, because right now it is sitting right on the corner where there's a trolley stop. And having seen the trolley route at close range, and understanding what the development is going to be following as this project is completed, we want to be first movers on this particular project by bringing it now to the table and asking for your approval to bring this forward. This will be a landmark as you turn the corner on Santa Ana Boulevard, and it will be a real benefit for the community in that it will provide a kind of a gateway as you come out of the Lacey Logan neighborhood and into the city center. There's going to be some very bright buildings and some nice appeal as you come by on the trolley, and hopefully we'll have a little restaurant or something in the bottom there to provide some refreshments for those who are at the trolley stop.
If I may ask you, it's right there on Santa Boulevard, close to Main Street?
It's a corner, well, our block goes from Spurgeon to French, and covers 1.74 acres. So we have.
Beautiful.
We have a prime location, and we figured that the best way to use it is to put it back in the community.
And if I'm not mistaken, you also have the privilege, and we have the privilege, of having you serve on the Orange County Grand Jury?
That's correct.
Thank you for your service, and thank you. I had no idea you were so active with the church here. This is wonderful.
Thank you, sir.
And a wonderful project. Deborah Gillan, do you know this guy?
A little bit.
A little bit.
I am Deborah Gillan, and I am the chairperson of the board of, the governance board of Santa Ana United Methodist Church. My family has been a part of Santa Ana United Methodist since the mid-'60s. My husband and I have lived in Wilshire Square since 1976, so we have deep roots in this community. Being a part of Santa Ana United Methodist Church is very exciting. We are a multi-generational and multicultural church. We believe in many ways we are the future of what churches and what our city of Santa Ana looks like, and will continue to look like in the future. So we're very excited and pleased to be a part of the opportunity of being the vanguard of providing affordable housing and addressing the homeless problem here in Santa Ana. So I just would thank you for your past efforts and support in moving that whole process forward, and respectfully appreciate and thank you for your support for this project as well.
Thank you for taking time to come down. This is very, very impressive, the project and your long-term, you know, multi-decade commitment to this community, really beyond, over a century if you start adding up all the numbers. Thank you. Jerry, and then after Jerry, if I could have Ruben Espanda and Carla Jasa, please come on down.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. First, I want to thank the city council members for how Santa Ana has been at the forefront of addressing this year's lack of affordable housing, and for their leadership with innovative ways in a counter-wide effort to bring more permanent supportive housing units online. My name is Jerry Gerocca, a member and one of the church leader of the Santa Ana United Methodist Church, and I'm standing and speaking in front of you to share my personal experience of living before and still doing business in Santa Ana. My wife and I came into the United States 19 years ago and decided to rent a room to have our own privacy after living in a friend's house. In 2003, we ended up living in Spurgeon 17th Street area in an eight-by-eight room in a probably illegally built house extension with six rows of bedroom, one small shared kitchen, a one-and-a-half shared bathroom, and a rent steadily creeping up from $750 to almost $1,000. I have seen some of our Hispanic room neighbors have two or three kids living in the same size of room that we're living in, sharing the same one-and-a-half bathroom between 15 to 20 individuals. I'm very sure that we are all ended up on that rental place because of one reason, affordability. Four years ago, around Christmas time, with cold temperature and rain, our grand avenue campus housed more than 100 homeless people that were in overflow from a homeless shelter close by. I spoke to a woman with two daughters, age seven and four, and drive a small late-model Chevrolet car. I asked her why she became homeless. The woman says that her current part-time salary will not able to afford a one-bedroom apartment. The other homeless I came across the next day stressed up neatly, owns a late-model Ford car with a lot of his belongings inside his car. He told me that he lost his job and cannot afford to stay in his former one-bedroom apartment unit. He also told me that he's going to a job interview that afternoon. People tell in hard times they need somebody or something to get back on their feet. I believe that everybody deserves a second chance, and for the city of Santa Ana to give our homeless people a chance to get back on their feet. I also believe that a more affordable housing in Santa Ana will absolutely help a lot of families to live and work in a pleasant environment. In closing, I stand fully in support of our Legacy Square development project. I am also urging the city council to approve the awards and funds for our Legacy Square development. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruben, go ahead.
Good evening, mayor, council members. I want to be short. I am a pastor, associate pastor for Santana United Methodist Church, but I am also pastor for El Hitzmanni United Methodist Church located in Henninger Park. I am here to support our project, our Legacy Square project, due to the needs I see in our church members and our community. You know, loving God and loving our neighbor is our goal. Please support this project to respond to needs that we have in our community. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Polito and council members. I'm Carla Jasa, and I'm chief operating officer with Orange County United Way. Many of you have met our CEO, Sue Parks. We reached here earlier last year to talk about our partnership with the Orange County Free Tax Prep Campaign. I've had the pleasure of meeting many of you over the years as well. It's my pleasure to be here, both on behalf of United Way and United in Homelessness, the new countywide initiative that we've helped to start to mobilize various sectors of the community and supportive efforts like you have before you here today to help to end homelessness in Orange County. It's also a pleasure to be here, both as a former employee of the city of Santa Ana, was an intern many years ago in the Community Development Agency, as well as a homeowner here and resident in Santa Ana myself. Really want to thank you and the city council here for the leadership that you've demonstrated. We know that you have definitely demonstrated some leadership in your innovative new shelters that you've created, the permanent supportive housing that you've brought online, the Orchard being one of them, and several others, I know that you've all worked very, very hard on. United in Homelessness was established just about a year ago to bring to light the recommendations of a cost study, which we, as United Way commissioned with UCI, to demonstrate the costs of homelessness to our community. And as I mentioned, we've engaged across-sector of business leaders who are helping to bring those recommendations to life, including projects like the one that you have before you here today, for your approval. And essentially, we are here to support you. You hopefully have seen the public awareness efforts that we have engaged in over the course of the past several months, including over Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in November, in order to change public will and help to give you all the support that you need to make the decisions to support projects such as one that you have before you here today. We have over 3,000 supporters who've signed up to support efforts like the ones that you have here before you, and to support the right solutions to homelessness, including permanent supportive housing. So it's because of this that I'm here today to support, to voice our support for this item, item ADA, to approve the affordable housing development and the use of product-based vouchers that Santa Ana United Methodist Church, which we know will include permanent supportive housing units, which you heard from your residents are critically important. They're both aligned with the goals of United in Homelessness, and I want you to know that we are here to support you as you move forward with projects such as this. We urge your vote in support of it, and as you move forward, let us know how we can help you in the future through community education and further awareness. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll bring it to council for thoughts or consideration.
I'd like to make a motion, approve, or comment?
We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second. Go ahead and make your comment. I know Councilman Iglesias wants to speak, and Councilor Loews joins.
Well, one of the questions that I have for you, Mr. Mendoza, is, I know one of the concerns that we've been hearing across the city is that we are approving a lot of projects, and we're not really taking into consideration the parking issue. And in reviewing this, the staff report and the backup documentation that you provided us, it seems that it's going to have just 1.1 car per unit, and I know that that is going to be an overflow into the neighborhood, especially French Park. And I know that they've expressed some concerns about how is that going to be addressed. I was here yesterday at the meeting for the planning commission, and that was very contentious on the 2525 project, and that was one of their concerns, was, you know, was traffic and also it was parking, with the density. So with this, I have, I know the environmental impact report, what did it share in regards to, like, you know, the impact that it's going to have on parking? And also, how are we going to address that? Because even though I understand that we're going to be on the, you know, on Civic Center, that's going to be, I guess, for the toll, that trolley?
The streetcar.
Oh, it's a trolley, sorry. I know that, you know, we want to encourage for us to use public transportation, but, you know, unfortunately, sometimes we just can't rely on transportation. We have to go somewhere else, and especially when there are low-income housing, there's always opportunities, I guess, to have more than just one family living in one housing. So I don't know how that's going to be addressed. Is that something that the housing agency, are they the ones that are tracking that and monitoring that? So I would like to understand how that is not going to impact, even though we know we do want to serve our homeless and, you know, the low-income housing, but also take into consideration the residents of French Park and the surrounding neighborhoods.
Okay. For a little bit of clarity, this item is not a land-use decision tonight, this is a funding decision tonight. The planning commission was charged with doing the land-use part of the approval on this. So the environmental document is not part of tonight's approval, it was part of last night's planning commission approval. But I will call Alexa, if you can come up front, she'll talk about operations, and I'm going to have Min Thai also talk about the parking ratio established for this project. Because you had an operations question, I'll have Alexa address that. Thanks. Ms. Alexa Washburn.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Alexa Washburn. I'm vice president of planning with National Community Renaissance. You had a comment or a question about allowing more than one family to live in a unit, and that's strictly illegal and not allowed. We have to comply with very strict regulations from the state, the city, and the federal government, and we have a complete compliance department that is dedicated to ensure checks and balances are in place and that we keep compliance. I'll defer to Steve. Did you also want me to address the parking issue right now?
Yeah, if you could elaborate on why you've chosen this parking ratio, and then from a regulatory point of view, Min Thai is here to speak of that.
Great. Yes. In regards to parking, to be honest, we're more concerned of non-residents and non-guest parking in our structure and the neighborhood, and for that reason, we have secured, provided secured parking. But National Corps' approach in this project to parking management is really a two-pronged approach. Number one, we, so we are the project managers, the property managers, that will be onsite, and we strictly enforce a parking management plan. And in fact, I have our regional property managers here tonight that can go into detail about this parking management plan. But secondly, our other prong is to incentivize residents not to drive vehicles or use cars. And we do that in that each household will be provided a transit pass for use on the OCTA buses and connections to MetroLink. Secondly, is to promote walking and biking. As part of our project, we are applying for what's called Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Funding through the state, and we will be investing $4 million into the surrounding neighborhood in mobility improvements. That's with bikeways, that's repairing sidewalks, that's safe routes to school. We conducted a walk audit with the parents of Garfield Elementary School and the principal and staff there to identify these improvements that are needed in the neighborhood to facilitate mobility. We're also improving a number of bus shelters, and then again, the transit passes, sidewalks, and so forth. So it's a two-pronged approach to strictly enforced parking management, as well as incentivizing our residents to not use their vehicles. The parking that is provided does comply with the Transit Zoning Code in AB 744, and I think Min's going to go into detail on that. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right.
So in terms of the parking ratio, we, early on when we met with the applicant, we also stressed very strongly regarding the parking. also stressed very strongly regarding the parking management plan that they described because if the parking ratio, the reduction would work if there's strong management, there is, you know, regulation by the management company on parking. For affordable housing project, they do qualify for reduction of parking, but in addition to that, this project is a transit-oriented development base. That means that it's located in near a transit-rich area, near our downtown. We have bus line, but we also have the streetcar coming through. As they mentioned, they are also providing bus passes. So those elements all come together to help ensure that the parking ratio that's been approved of the project is something that will work. But as part of their affordable housing development, being 100% affordable, they qualify for a certain reduction in terms of the requirements, as well as the parking reduction. And that's something that is qualified for through state law, but also through our local regulations.
Councilor Solario.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good presentation. The other thing I wanted to add, this is one of the first projects that now comes to us for a pre-loan funding agreement that was based off of a request for proposals. So we went out to the community to seek interested parties that, that might seek these types of funds, whereas before it was almost just kind of case by case, or as individuals said, hey, we got this great proposal to use your land, give us money, and you know, some of these projects were, were better than others. So this went through a very fair process, and I think the panel, when they looked at it, they looked at, you know, the capacity, the leadership team, the folks involved, the type of apartment, the location, all these other things. And this is, I think, going to be very valuable as we start up our streetcar project. But I share the same concerns about parking and other things, but through land use, staff reports, we'll see some of that in, in the future. And I know I started some of these questions with some of the folks I hear in the room, including Ernie Vasquez, who's part of the, part of the team and outstanding, you know, longtime friend of Santa Ana and architect, so a lot of credibility there for sure. But we do want to keep refining what our parking standards are and how to find when wins. And sometimes I struggle myself, okay, well, what's the solution? And one may be for larger projects, also, you know, valet parking, so that if at a certain point, it gets so problematic that there's a requirement that the, the department management company or the owner offer valet, valet parking, so something that's dignified and convenient and easy. And if it worked for South Coast Plaza and all these other places, it could look, work also for, you know, a working-class community. So we need to be creative, because some places are parking spot constrained, but then we have seas of open parking at some of these larger strip malls or at schools. And so we need to be creative to figure out in the evenings how to, you know, use the parking that we have, because we also understand that each parking spot is extremely expensive. But tonight's just a, you know, pre-loan funding agreement and related items, and I'm in support. Thank you.
All right. I would, I think it would be best right now, we are in motion, correct?
Yes, I'm motion to approve with a comment.
Yes, you did. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Go ahead, comment.
Real quick, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the staff for the hard work that went into this project. And Judson Brown, over there, you know, I heard a lot of good things about you on this project. I mean, you really impressed some of your colleagues. And I want to thank you and all of your staff for all of the work that you did on this. This is really, really good piece of work and very, very impressed. And please get that out to the troops that were working with you on this. And that's all I want to say. Thank you very much. You should be recognized for that. With that, Mr. Mayor.
We have motion. Any other comment? If not, I'd like to make comment. And what I'd like to say is that while I'm sitting up here, I'm getting texts from the neighborhood saying, you know, please, you know, we've got a lot of impact in the neighborhood already. But I have a lot of faith that this will be extremely well-operated and that hopefully it uplifts the neighborhood, not in any way degrades anything. That it'll be a positive net influence. And just seeing the quality people, I always look out in the audience, it's like, you know, you know, we've got the A-team here. I mean, Ernie, I don't know how they brought you out of, wherever they brought you out of, but, but you're there. And in the back row, I mean, you know, Bat Whitaker and a Larry Haynes and, and then, you know, the, not only one Gillen, but two that are here. Yeah. It's like, I, I think a very, very, very strong team, hopefully will be kind and nice and working well with the neighborhood, because, you know, we care about everybody here in the city. But I think here's an opportunity to be good and to do good and to, you know, lead by example. So I'm really going to pull for you all and, and hope that this works out as well as we all want it to. So with that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck and be well. Now, Madam. Pardon? 85A, I'm going to open up the public hearing on that item. And I have one speaker. And before we do anything else, let's go ahead and listen to the one speaker. And the speaker is Carlo J. Bonani.
Carlo.
Carlo, Carlo.
Italian, Spanish.
Carlo, Carlo.
Part of Latin language. Hello, Mayor. Happy New Year's to you, Council members and all. I want to say that it's either last month or November, off of Bristol, between Sunflower and Saddleback, they had cleaned that railroad section out. Santa Ana, Santa Ana was there, Orange County sheriffs were there, and it seemed like they were pushing them towards Bristol. But I noticed that the railroad police had to do their job, and they didn't have enough, you know, they were checking everybody that was living on that bike path right there. Some of y'all should take it like a walk down there and see what it looks like. Maybe take one Santa Ana PD with you guys, because it is pretty bad there. Molly's refueling gas at the Chevron station there, and they're all camping out over there. Even told some of them about, there was a complaint about the homeless shelter, and none of them want to go. They all want to be like nomads. So some of these people could be helped, some can't be helped. Maybe give them a bus ticket out to some other city, let the other city deal with it. But I hope you guys get to work with Union Pacific Police Department and keep that. That's the only section I see that's crowded with all the homeless people there. I mean, we've been trying for five years now to try to get the lights up at Saddleback, and we did have a couple people that were complaining about it because it was going to make too much noise. But now I see they have portable generator lights on the fields. And maybe they should put the lights up there and have the kids there, keep the homeless people awake all night, and maybe they would want to stay there. But over the, through the holidays, from Dyer, Warner, all the way to Bristol, everything around Bristol, there was a lot of homeless people there, and they didn't want to go to the shelter. So I hope that 600-bed works, because PD's got a lot of problems, and so do you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlo, do you speak Italian?
I speak Italian, molto bene.
Molto bene. All right. I'm sorry I asked, but.
Maybe a little bit of French.
It's okay. It's okay. So this is receiving an file, basically, or receiving update from staff? Any other comments from Council members?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, no. I and two of my colleagues here brought this forward. We, in different settings, have talked about rail company maintenance of their properties, because, you know, those tend to be a little hidden away. They're harder to, for folks to monitor, whether public works or PD or the general public. And from time to time, they do clean their areas, but then they go away for months on end, and the problem moves somewhere else, and it's, and it's ongoing. And I think we're at the point that we need some kind of enforcement action against them. And I know with the great work of our city attorney and others on our team and PD, we've been very successful in some of these abatement programs, so that there's a continuity of effort. And so I wanted for our, our staff, whether it be our city attorney and our PD, to give an update on how we're doing with, with the railroads, hear from our colleagues as well. And maybe it's time for us to take a, a city council vote directing staff to initiate enforcement action against the railroad companies, company or companies, because that's where we have our worst issues, and fires, and fights, and drugs, and paraphernalia. And many of these railroad properties are alongside our bikeways, parks, et cetera. So there ends up being a lot of conflict also with residents and children and, you know, the supposed safe routes to school. So just wanted to bring this forward for, for a staff update and then discussion by our colleagues.
If I may, Councilmember, what I would suggest is that we be in touch and contact Judge Carter. He's trying to, he's not only working with the railroads, but he's trying to potentially encourage certain strategies. So we should, whatever we do, let's coordinate with the court. Yes, coordinate with the court, because he can be very supportive of any effort that we undertake. So before we go out and take any action, and I know that our Deputy Chief Kaminsky talks to him 20 times a day or so, more or less, and I know he got a call here to talk to our mayor, Potem, and I talked to Judge, we should all be talking to Judge. It's a serious problem. I, I had the opportunity recently to go visit Councilor Peñalosa, and he had me go up on, on the roof. And I'm, I don't like heights, but I did it. And we went, and there happens to be a rail spur behind the building that he works at. And oh my God, I took pictures and I sent them down to the, you know, oh boy, now he's going to come speak. Go ahead, come on down. Now he's going to come down and comment.
No, sir, I was going to talk to him. Not you, sir.
He's got a nice suit on today.
Yeah, now, now you got a suit. You like to show it off. Had it tailored and everything. You know, everybody's proud of you. Come on down. You can, you can make a comment on anything.
For the cameras.
Right. You're on TV.
Great. Your Honor, we, we've been talking with various different entities for a while about what strategies might be successful with the railroads. It's, our problem is not that we don't get support from the railroad police. Our problem is that we don't get support from the railroad company in cleanup efforts. Routinely, there are three contractors that I'm aware of that work with the two railroads that run through the city of Santa Ana. Those two, those three contractors from a single railroad company, those three contractors are responsible for everything in Southern California. So the company, the railroad company itself does not have, or is not putting enough effort or money into cleanup efforts. We have had several discussions with, like I said, entities. I do have an understanding of where we would like to go. And that is to discuss the concept of entering into legal action against the railroads in cooperation with several other cities that are in fact suffering from the same issues that we are suffering with. The, again, it is not that the police departments from Union Pacific or Burlington Northern are not supportive of our efforts. They are. When we call, when the chief calls their chief of police, there is absolutely no issue with them coming out here and being supportive of us. Law enforcement to law enforcement, we have a great relationship. Our issue is the company, the companies as they act as companies are not being held accountable to be responsible for the property that they own. We have worked with them. They are responsive to us, but when you have to compete with all the rest of Southern California with those three contractors, we just don't get them enough.
Well, maybe we ought to all communicate to the court. Obviously, here are three councilmembers that brought this forward, but seven councilmembers would be interested in this issue. We all are. So let, let's just continue to communicate, but let's figure out what a good plan of action is, because I think we can do more. So thank you for bringing it forward, and, and let's continue with our meeting.
But, but, Mr. Mayor, I do want, though, our police department, the city attorney, to start to think about what an enforcement action may be. Because the other reality is, we've been at some of this stuff three, four years. So another six months of dialogue with the judge or anybody else doesn't necessarily always, doesn't always bring it home. So I just want to really highlight some urgency rather than, because we now have a model. We've done enforcement actions against other property owners, and it's been successful.
Go ahead, Councilor Iglesias.
So I, I agree with what you're, with what you're bringing up, and I just feel it's been a, it's too long in the, in, you know, that we've been waiting. I know the residents there by MacArthur and Dyer, they have been very impacted, and it's, it's not safe to walk around there. And so I just, I just feel that if there's residents in other cities or other municipalities that have, that have done that, I would support for us to be having, you know, a firmer stand on what we're doing, because like, you're right, it's been like four years and six more months, it's not going to help anything in dialogue. So I would support with us going, you know, having a little firmer and definitely trying to see what we can do.
So maybe, because it sounds like there's already been some interaction, if we can continue to have PD and our city attorney work with these other cities to see if we can team up, because some of these efforts do take resources as well, and if we're working with others, our voice will be stronger. And, you know, maybe we can bring this back in, in 30 days with, you know, opportunities for, for some actions there.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Kaminsky. Thank you very much for the clarification on all that. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment?
Yes.
Staff's ready to identify the problem, bring the team together, and identify a cause of action. We'll bring that back to you in 30 days and discuss it with our neighbors as well.
Excellent. Excellent. Really quick, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
And I just, again, wanted to thank our, our staff and police and, and sheriffs and everyone that's, that's been actively involved over there, pulling out the railroad tracks. You know, people think of the railroad tracks, they're not just going through the industrial areas, they're going along our bike trails, along our shopping centers, along our schools, our high schools, our elementary. And, and I, we have to hold the railroad company accountable. And, Mr. City Manager, if we could, 30 days, that'd be great to, to start looking at ways that we could do that with the railroad company, because they're also a company, and they're in the business of making money and delivering these freights and whatnot along these railroads. But, you know, at the end of the day, they're not, they're not hurting from, you know, the these, the, the nuisance that goes on on the railroads, the other companies, our, our residents, our, our communities, our parks, and we need to hold them accountable. So just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on. I now want to recess council meeting and convene to the Housing Authority meeting. I will entertain a motion on Items 1, 2, and 3. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item number four, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Is there a second? All seconded. Scott Larson and Carla Jasa, I believe it is. Now, keep in mind, we're about, I believe, to approve this, so don't talk us out of it.
Good point.
Well, Carla's already been up here, so I don't know if she needs to speak again. But, good evening, Mayor Polito and members of the council. My name's Scott Larson. I'm the Executive Director for Homemade Orange County. And Homemade has been developing a variety of types of projects in the community to end homelessness, and specifically, we've had a great partnership here in the city of Santa Ana in the development of Emmanuel House and the San Miguel Residence. And the project that you have before you, we actually designed 10 years ago prior to the demise of the Redevelopment Agency. And we've been waiting all these years for the opportunity to develop this project again. And when the RFP came out this last summer, we were excited to resubmit this project for your consideration. It's been great to work with staff, Judson Brown and his team, and we're excited to really move forward with, with this project tonight with your approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, again. Happy to be here again on behalf of United Way, United and Homelessness, to voice our support for this project as well. We, as you saw before you, Scott Larson and Homemade and Mercy House have done work in this field for many, many years, and we're very pleased to be able to see this move forward, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion on this item.
Move the item.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item 5, or Housing Authority member comments, do we have any such comments? If not, I will adjourn the Housing Authority. And now I'm going to come back to and reconvene the successor agency meeting, and I will And I would entertain a motion on items one, two, three, and four. Is there such a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Those that know what we just voted on, say aye. No, I'm kidding. Just checking. No comments from the successor agency, so we're just about done. Now I'll go to city manager comments, please.
Thank you for letting me serve you.
Thank you. We're just about done. We have some speakers that, the clerk just made me aware of. Lupe Rico, come on down and speak. Javier Hernandez. And that's it. How come Dale didn't turn in a card?
I have a running card with me.
All right, well, let's hear from Lupe Rico, I mean Lupe Rico and Javier Hernandez. And if they're gone, then, did Dale turn in a card, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
All right, we have a yes and a no, so come on down. I'm playing a joke, I got the card right here. But I had everybody confused. Go ahead.
I thought I had a free standing card anyway. Dale Helvig, Park Santiago, chairman of North Santa Ana Preservation Alliance. Happy New Year to all of you guys and gal. I'm here because I oppose the 2525 main residential development. And as you may be aware, last night, there was a planning commission meeting that lasted until 11:59. That's when we got out of here. There was a lot of community neighborhoods that were represented on both sides. So we had people from Fullerton, Anaheim, Costa Mesa also talking about what we should be doing in Anaheim or in Santa Ana. After it was all said and done, the commission voted for to denying the application for the project. You guys will probably be seeing that within the next month. I understand that the applicant has decided to move forward with it without making any modifications to the project and hoping to get your support on it. There were several things that we were concerned about and that we've mentioned at numerous meetings before. And it's kind of interesting that when you guys were talking about the municipal code section tonight, you were talking about Mr. Solario, the tandem parking. One of the things that had changed in that project is they've added 150 tandem parking spots to the project which weren't there in the original proposal. And due to the modifications, they've added those in. So anyway, look forward to talking to you guys about it. I'm sure we'll have an equal amount of people or more coming down to the council meeting here within the next month. So, thank you.
So with that, now we've already heard city manager's comments, let's go to council member comments. Let's start with Councilor Solario, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one comment. We have a very big event in Santa Ana this coming weekend that I would encourage you to try to attend or learn about. It's the OC Women's March. I think it's the 30th annual and this Saturday in downtown Santa Ana, starting at 10:00 a.m., is going to be, you know, a massive march for what I believe are some very good causes and reasons. I would just ask that anyone interested, just on Facebook or online, you know, put in their OC Women's March 2019 and you'll get a lot of information and detail. Last year, there were 25,000 individuals that went to downtown Santa Ana for this Women's March. It's an amazing thing and they all get to see our beautiful downtown and restaurants and they shop here and they come back. So in addition to it being a movement type of opportunity for us to all be part of and learn from, it really is also an economic development event as well that, you know, is put on by the broader community with many from Santa Ana involved as volunteers, organizers, and definitely as participants. So would encourage you all to consider attending. Again, that's this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. in downtown Santa Ana.
Councilor Peñalosa, please.
Took the Women's March right out of my mouth, but same thing. And also just today is Martin Luther King Jr.'s 90th birthday and I wanted to just, and also my moms, they share a birthday and she scolded me for shouting out the King on Facebook before her. So I'll leave you guys with this quote for like, you know, everyone out there that he said. It's, "Every man and woman must decide whether he will walk in the light of creative altruism or in the darkness of destructive selfishness." Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilor Iglesias, please.
So I just want to thank staff for giving us the information that we requested and you guys are very, very supportive. Thank you for putting up with my learning curve and I just want you to know that I appreciate every time I reach out to you. You guys are always there to provide me the information. So thank you all. You guys know who you are. I see your smiling faces. I also want to take this opportunity to bring up a few things. I know we voted on the Measure X and the committee and how we're going to move forward with that. But I just want to reiterate my commitment to the community with the money that is going to be coming from Measure X. My commitment is to improve the parks and also improve our libraries because I know that's one thing that our community has been asking for. Our parks, if you guys have had an opportunity to go out and, you know, walk, they're, it's a sad state of our parks, to put it mildly. And I just feel that the commitment that we made, you know, to the voters is to use this money for the services of our residents. So, you know, for the community that's watching, you know, you have my commitment that I, my focus is going to be to beautify our parks and to also bring back our library. And I want to ask Sonia or Mr. Mendoza is, I know in the past, we used to have a director for the, for the library, so I don't know if that's something that we could talk about in, you know, in the future for, to see how we could bring back and that department because our libraries were taken away from us as a community. We used to have a library in McFadden by Sullivan and Fairview. And even though it's being used by our police department for PAL, but I think it took, they took it away from our community in a way that, you know, our kids used to go there for tutoring. Our kids used to go there to read books and just be in a place, in a safe place when they couldn't be at home because, you know, sometimes they're, they don't have adults at the, at the, at home. So they're expecting for us as city, responsible city administrators, for us to be able to provide that space for them. So I'm hoping that we can set aside conversations on how we're going, and since we were talking about the ad hoc committees, this would be one of them.
It could be.
Yeah, that I would want to really serve on because it's an opportunity for us to deliver on our promises that it was going to be for residents. So I know that just speaking where I live at Centennial Park and in conversations with Lisa, to do something significant at Centennial Park, it would take minimum $4 million. So that's, those are things that I'm looking at, how we can have those conversations. And also, not just, you know, Centennial, I'm going to be going around and going to all the different parks so we can try to see, you know, our, how our parks are leveling up with the expectations of our city. I also want to say that, starting on the 20th, which is the 19th, the reason I wear this scarf is because it's for school choice, meaning that nationally, we celebrate school choice from January 20th through January 26th. So I just want to wish all of you guys a national, happy National School Choice Week. And also invite you, on the 26th, at the Salvation Army, we're going to be having a National School Choice Week celebration. So you're more than welcome to join us. I know Officer Kenny with PAL is going to be there sharing his program, but I just want to encourage all of you guys to take part in National School Choice Week because it benefits our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On January 7th, which was a Monday, I was at the, I had the honor of being at the groundbreaking for the Veterans Village. The city of Santa Ana had a partnership or has a partnership with Jamboree Housing and I'm proud to say it's the largest veterans housing community in Orange County. And I was very, very proud to be part of it. I'm a veteran, so something very close to me and the city of Santa Ana, giving back to our veterans. So it was a great event. The weather was a little kooky, it was raining, but it was still a very, very good attendant, attendance and there was a lot of, a lot of news outlets there and it was, it was great, great turnout. I also want to congratulate all the newly elected officials for their victories and especially our new sheriff, Don Barnes, and our new district attorney, Todd Spitzer, and all of them both. And I want to wish them well and much success. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I want to keep it short here and say that a friend, Greg Pettis, he's mayor of Cathedral City, served many, many years. Unfortunately, he passed away recently and I want to, you know, close this meeting in his honor. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.